All right, the call is under order. Please stand to pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Please take your seats. Roll call, please. Ice Turp.
Savage.
Here.
Roche.
Here.
Brumball.
Here.
Uh, right now, we're going to swear in, uh, councilor, to be councilman treasurer troop to fill the vacant position on city council.
Somebody want to run?
What did I say? Is this your, is this your good side? All right. Please, uh, repeat after me. I state your name.
I Kevin Tru.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
That I will discharge the duties on my office.
That I will discharge and duty on my office.
What's that one? Congratulations, sir. Uh, you have some additions to the agenda. One, uh, for the adaptive reuse ordinance, uh, another for the comprehensive plan hearing, SRI update, first reading and advertisement of the 2026 budget, uh, city hall camera policy and police department camera policy. Do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
All right, is there any public comment on agenda items at this time? Any public comment on agenda items at this time? All right, uh, moving on, comprehensive plan hearing. Michelle?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle Bronner. I work for Danic Fleming as we were hired, our company is now GFC. Um, we were hired to prepare the comprehensive plan for the city. Comprehensive plan is a policy plan for the future of Sunbury's ten years and the city's future, specifically regarding, um, development and investment in the city. Um, the plan was delivered to the city, uh, over the summer. The, uh, committee of, of AL20 helped in preparation of that plan. It was, um, reviewed by the planning commission, accepted by them for then forwarding for your consideration this fall. Um, it has been posted on the city's website, uh, since midsummer and, uh, fall. Uh, has been open for review. Um, I spoke with, uh, Robin earlier today while I just reached Jeff directly. She said there had not been public comments, uh, public comments submitted in writing in advance, but tonight was the advertised public hearing, so we make your, uh, comments and support, critique, questions tonight. Uh, and those should all go into your consideration for, um, adoption of the plan at a future meeting. If you need help in the disposition of those comments, I'm going to do so.
Does anyone have any questions for Michelle about the comprehensive plan and the process? All right, we thank you very much for your time and your group and organization, everyone doing this for us. Thank you. SRI update, Jody?
Okay, so this is just a, a recap of what Sunrise Revitalization has been doing over the past year. And first of all, I want to thank our SRI community partners. These partners contribute a significant amount of money, the minimum is $10,000, over the course for the entire year, to, um, to help SRI in their operations and, and taking on the events and activities that they do. So that's UPFC, Wise Markets, and the city of Sunbury, and someone whose initials are JLO. Then, eh, just gonna go over a few things with you, the financials. Our financial reports are always available on request, so if you would like to see our profit in last, our, our balance sheet, our budget, anytime, you just need to contact me. Um, I just wanted to note that since the project, uh, last big project on the Albright Center, which was the HVAC system in the downstairs and the new commercial kitchen, we did have the opportunity to get another appraisal on the building. And the appraisal, which prior to the RAPP was about $250,000, $300,000. Since that, those projects have been completed, the Albright Center has been appraised at $1.4 million. Uh, our long-term liabilities, so we did have a bridge loan out during the RAPP, um, project, and that was in the amount of $487,000, $488,000, on which we were paying interest and, and waiting for the RAPP reimbursement to come from the state. So the reimbursement came in, and thank you to the city for being the pass-through and being the grantee and, and that, with that. And we did receive the reimbursement, paid off that loan, and we had another $12,000 then that, uh, helped us recoup the interest that we were paying for about a year, waiting for that reimbursement. Um, also, SRI had a line of credit that was open with the Northumberland National Bank, and they had been open for many years, and we, we were just paying the interest. And the, the board decided that this is enough is enough, we need to start paying down this actual loan. So what we did then was we took out a new loan, hence the new appraisal, uh, for $200,000, and that paid off that line of credit, and then it also had afforded us to have another $80,000 then that we could invest in capital improvements. We focused on getting mini-split systems so that we could have HVAC in the individual classrooms, and those spaces now are, when that project is done in the next few months, will be available and leasable, that will then provide us with some revenue, which will cover the cost of the note and, and then some, um, and keep activating that space more and more. So this is just, uh, the calendar review from, you know, for here into the next, uh, first quarter of next year. Of course, we have Shop Small Saturday this, um, this Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 29th. We have Late Night Shoppers December 4th. New Year's Eve, we're gonna do out here on December 31st. Bringing in 2026 at 6:00. We didn't have volunteers that were willing to be up until midnight in the cold, so what we decided to do was have an early light bulb drop, and then encourage people to stay in Sunbury and patronize our bars and restaurants. We're gonna advertise what's going on in Sunbury that evening. So bring people here, have them stay, and, and take part in our businesses. And Nate Savage has agreed to have a few remarks of, uh, New Year's at 5:45, right before the dropping of the light bulb. And then we, our fundraiser for SRI is brunch with benefits on February 1st, and an Irish Uli is back for its fourth year on March 7th. Um, at our annual membership meeting last couple weeks ago, um, we did vote in our officers and board of directors, you'll see them listed there. Amy Buhner is president, Laurie Johnson vice presidents here. Melissa, uh, Brown's treasurer, Julie Steiner secretary, and then the board director, Derek Backer, Joe Bartello, Chris Kingdale, and David Claystein. So just a year review, just a reminder of what our mission is, that is to promote Sunbury's revitalization by collaborating with local and regional partners, connecting residents, neighborhoods, and businesses with resources, and cultivating positive images of Sunbury. We updated our vision to say that Sunbury is a charming small town with a part of a big city, and our values we also updated to clarify and be succinct at leadership by example, and actions speak louder than words. Um, in our collaborating, we've collaborated with the city of Sunbury on the comprehensive plan, as Michelle mentioned, and that's pending this, the city council's adoption. Uh, we thank the city for their event support, year after year, event after event, you couldn't do it without them. And then with the Blueprint Communities program, uh, we thank you also for, uh, including us in your budget for 2026 to support the Blueprint Communities Downtown Revitalization efforts, and also in the project collaboration. Um, we've been collaborating with Pennsylvania Downtown Center and with the Department of Community and Economic Development at the state level. Um, and we did graduate from the Blueprint Communities program. Uh, we'll continue to get support from Pennsylvania Downtown Center as we move forward, um, preparing for a Main Street designation and your extra resources that, that will bring to us as well. In connecting, uh, we still facilitate Think Sunbury Business Association as a, as a forum for communication, networking, and support for Sunbury businesses. We've had an annual business dinner and discussion now for three years in a row. The first year, we had Mayor Lombardo from the, from Pittston, who, um, was able to tell us of how they were able to affect great revitalization in Pittston, kind of inspiring us to move forward with our own efforts. And then in 2024, uh, we had Spud Marshall here from High 3A Community where we sat down, with many people actually in this room, and we reimagined Sunbury. And then this year, we had Reimagine Sunbury Part Two, which is Vision to Action. So the, a year ago, we had a vision, we talked about all the things, what the priority should be. And then in this year, we revealed that our strategic plan with the actions that we're going to take to realize that vision. Um, we've also been connecting with Susquehanna University and Bucknell University programs. Um, their management, uh, senior level management, 400 class, have done some great consulting work with us on our data analysis. And they are currently working on, um, things for the Albright Center that we're gonna need for our next campaign, which is pro forma feasibility study, um, the pro, and other documents that we're gonna need. Okay, so cultivating the positive image, we are, um, pushing Think Sunbury as our marketing brand. Um, we have thinksunbury.com website that has community calendar and a business directory. And we have a Think Sunbury sculpture that is ready to be installed in Cameron, Cameron Park in the Mary Louvre near future. And it's gonna be that Think Sunbury logo, um, actually at the end of Cameron Park, and it'll be something that people will recognize as they come in. It kind of marks a milestone that we're moving forward, and we're adopting this, this vision, and this slogan, and this call to action to Think Sunbury. Uh, 2026 calendar of events, I'm not gonna read them all to you, but those are the, the dates for our events coming up, um, in 2026. And, um, I now wanna give a more focused update on the Blueprint Communities Downtown Sunbury team, COB, team members there, we do need a replacement city official on our team, and, um, so it's required for us to have that member on the team. So I know it was gonna be Cheryl, she resigned, had been there, it's a beautiful authority, so we just need a replacement. And that person would be coming to our meetings, part of the team. We're planning on continuing to meet once a month, follow up on the strategic plan, make sure that it's continually moving forward, and also be that communication between Blueprint Community Team, Downtown Sunbury Team, and the city council, and coordinating any initiatives with the city. Um, you'll see that we have, are celebrating our milestone, like I said. We graduated in this first 18-month intensive period of many workshops and, um, meetings that we had to, um, come up with this strategic plan. Next, you'll see our, uh, vision for the downtown, and that is a welcoming and vibrant downtown that thrives on collaboration, engagement, and innovation. And next, you'll see these are the three goals of our strategic plan for downtown revitalization, which by the way, nests right into the city's comprehensive plan. So you'll see that in the city's comprehensive plan, it makes mention of this Blueprint Communities program and collaborating with SRI on implementation. Um, so then you'll see our progress to date, these are the inputs. So I mentioned the many team meetings, our team meant, uh, between the regular monthly meetings and work sessions that we did, 30 times at least over 18 months. We attended eight full-day workshops, we had 13 seminars, six community engagement events and activities, and we did six projects with Susquehanna and Bucknell Universities, probably a total of more than 5,000 team hours. Um, and, uh, under the treasurer category, we received $84,800 in Blueprint Communities grants. Some of that was for our training, um, memberships and attendance at organizations like, and conferences. And some of that, uh, we also received money from the city of Sunbury, specifically for some projects that we did, and, uh, like the Think Sunbury Sculpture and, uh, upcoming, um, Stroll Alley Improvement Project. And then we also received money from our SRI community partners, Wise Markets, UPFC, and JLO. So over $100,000 worth of funding has come to purle on that, that program. And here's our output, put progress to date. We have a five-year strategic plan for the downtown revitalization. Three goals, 11 objectives, 35 action, detailed action plans. We have a five-year sustainability, all mapped up, of how are we gonna be able to continue this program over the course of implementing that strategic plan. Um, we have a downtown management program, we've hired a full-time downtown manager, Sarah Bauer. We've also, uh, and we're beginning stages of putting together our Main Street designation application, which we will submit in 2026. And then we have a community events and engagement coordinator, who is a full-time AmeriCorps member. She's with us until at least August, we hope we can keep her long after that. We have our Think Sunbury marketing program, and announcing tonight our community gift card program, which is a gift card that we signed on a contract with this company called Givealine. Um, it was $1,500 for two years, and that's for them to be able to administer and manage this gift card program. What it is, is you can buy gift cards, like back by Mastercard, back by bank, like any other gift card you would buy off a rack, um, in any store. The, the really great thing about it is that it's usable specifically for any business with a 1-7-8-0-1 zip code. So what we're doing is we're promoting people to buy gift cards that will be used at our businesses. So if you're gonna be buying gift cards as stocking stuffers or birthday presents, anytime, you'll be able to go online and buy a card, it'll be sent to you. We'll also have some cards available, hoping Shop Small Saturday, and certainly by Late Night Shoppers, that you'll be able to buy in person, and we'll load them up, and then you can give them as your birthday presents. Oh, flowers up here, Brown. So, then, let me just, another thing about the Think Sunbury Sculpture project, like I said, uh, we had a $5,000 Blueprint grant, SRI Community Partners contributed another $5,000, and the city of Sunbury approved up to $10,000, and that's mainly for, um, about half of that is for paying for the sculpture itself, and the other for the installation. Um, I'd like to thank Agent Snyder, Iron Vine's Winery, as part of the, person who helped design the sculpture, A&amp;J Construction, who fabricated it, Councilman Ice Turp, thank you for your support in moving this project forward, and CityDPW, 'cause I know you're gonna be working on installing that bad boy. The Stroll Alley Improvement Project, again, we got Blueprint, uh, Communities Grant, $10,000, and we're very thankful that the city did approve using up to $28,000, I think was the number, of CBDG money, um, to further fund that project. We'll be looking for additional funding, so that'll take care of some of the permanent structures, and then we'll get some additional funding for benches and tables and shade sales and such. The last project is just kind of in its infancy, conceptual stage at this point, which is the power plant project. Um, it's a plan that we've proposed for the former police department building, they're on Market Street, that three-story building, to turn it into apartments, and also, uh, that will be on the main floor, the headquarters for our Main Street program, some shared workspaces to help, uh, with businesses, maybe a business incubator, and hopefully also an ADA accessible apartment on that first floor. I mean, all of this, again, conceptual stages, but what this project does is it takes care of a ground field property, a vacant property that has been big vacant for a little while now, and, um, brings into it things that are gonna improve the economy and contribute to the economy in, in Sunbury and downtown. So moving forward, we're gonna be formalizing the relationship between this downtown Sunbury team, which is kind of separate from SRI, although we're facilitating it, we're the anchor organization for all the funding and things. Um, formalize that relationship moving forward, strategic plan implementation accountability, and building, um, building strength in our public, private, and building proper partnerships, and getting that Main Street designation. Um, a few words about the Albright Center for the Arts. Thank good Lord and saints for bringing Ed Krebs to the Albright Center. He has taken it over, and he has really brought it leaps and bounds. By having that commercial kitchen done and that HVAC in the, down, on the downstairs, that, that venue is being used two, three times a week right now. There's something booked in there, between things that Ed's doing, like two thing, like music club, swing dance lessons, and other people that are renting it for events and activities. Um, we just demonstrated, um, the use of the main auditorium, the former sanctuary, with two concerts that we had in October, and, um, it was amazing. Wanted to thank, uh, we had some, uh, sponsors help us with buying some acoustic enhancements. Pipe and Drake helped cut down on the reverberation in that room, so that it sounds better when, when there amplified music is playing in there. The music was amazing, we have some amazing local musicians, and that Howlin' Blue reviews, that band was hot, amazing. And then, uh, we had the Grateful Dead unplugged, I was not really a Grateful Dead fan, but I was grooving that night just to sing. So, moving forward, it's a classroom improvement, so we can have feasible spaces for our sustainability, and then continuing the venue rentals, grant funding for facility improvements, equipment and program development, gonna be going on all the time, it's still a multi-million dollar project to get finished. But we are using every, every bit of it that we can, in the condition that it's in right now. And then, uh, we will be organizing and offering spring and fall concert series, probably three in each, and that's when the weather is amenable to being in that building, without the heat, the air conditioning. Um, and then, of course, we'll be working on continuing the capital campaign. So, any questions or comments from anyone? We've been working hard.
It's incredible to see it all come together.
Yeah, I'm excited, I feel like things have really built from momentum, and we've gotten more people actually reaching out to us, or saying, we're interested in being involved. And that, I mean, just brings me to tears. So, um, thank you very much. Any other questions or anything, you can always contact me.
Thank you, Jody. Uh, moving on to old business, there is no old business, but there is new, uh, there is new business. Uh, the first one is, uh, adapting the reuse ordinance. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Jackie for this before we make a vote? No questions? All right, so I make the motion to, uh, for the reuse of ordinance, do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes, Tru.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to another, oh, all right.
So, just wanna be certain that the motion is for, for me to.
Advertising. Yes, advertising, yes. All right. Uh, moving on, uh, to the other addition, uh, the city hall camera, uh, policy along with the police department camera policy. Do I have a second?
Savage.
Yes.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
All right, uh, moving on to 351 South Fourth Street Garden Maintenance. Uh, I know this, I don't know, Jim Brumball, I don't know if you wanted to talk about it, you want me to talk about this up here, sir?
Well, the Browns, similar level, and it's quite extensive. So, we have some photographs up here of what the property did look like. I'll let these up here, so after the meeting, if you wanna take a look at them, you're welcome to look at them. And this is trash that come out of the property. This is how it ended up. Now, I'd like to give thanks to the young couple, Yomar and Angie, are you here tonight?
They're, they're in the back there.
Stand up, would you, so everybody can see you. Okay, these two young people are the ones that done all this work, though with the, uh, Yes to the Future group. And I mean, this was a lot of work. When you come up, you can see these pictures, but we just wanna thank you for what you've done.
And just a little bit about Angie and Yomar, so like, they work, I mean, not they work, they go to Sun Tech, and then they come to the city to do work for us, so they did that after they went to school all day. So this goes to show their type of work ethic and their dedication to, obviously, their future. So, thank you to them, and also to Career Link for, you know, providing us with that program to help us. So, any questions on that, Nate, that yard? All right, uh, moving on, uh, for that 2026, uh, meeting notices, that goes back to all the meetings from council to budget to RA, to every meeting across the year for 2026. Any questions on that, anyone? All right, so I make the motion to accept the meeting notices for 2026, do I have a second?
Second. Brumball.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ice Turp.
Uh, moving on, Councilman Brumball.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to hire a part-time code officer, Matthew Burthing, $18 per hour pending background checks.
Questions, anyone? All right, I will second.
Tru.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
All right, just, just a quick question, 'cause I know this was talked about last meeting, I know we said about waiting, but I know we, we just hired a part-timer at $18 an hour, but our full-timers make less than that. So I don't know if we're gonna wait till the beginning of the year to make that right for our full-time workers, or if we wanna take action here tonight, but I don't know what our thoughts were on that. If, or if anybody has any thoughts, or we're just gonna wait and see what happens?
I think we should wait till the first of the year with the new budget.
No, I mean, that's fine, I just, I just wanted to bring that up because, like I said, part-timers make more than their full-timers, but. Well, I'm, I mean, that's fine, I just, I don't have issue. Okay, well, I'm just, I just, I just wanted to bring it up so it's fair to them, so it was brought up. All right, uh, keep going, Councilman Brumball.
Okay, uh, I'd like to make a motion for permission to advertise, interview, and hire part-time code clerk, code officer.
I'll second.
Question. I'm concerned about the hiring, I know we just hired, uh, Matthew Burthing, but nobody has mentioned about the fact of the, you just mentioned, about the new council person being involved in this procedures.
Well, we still have a twelfth of the year to go.
We have thirty, what? Well, I, my, my suggestion would be that Andrew and Parton, anything.
Not talking any.
I mean, he can be involved in the process, I don't think anybody has an issue with that, I mean.
Well, if, and if he doesn't agree with it, then I think you can leave the list.
Well, yeah, he, he can voice his opinion, yeah, it's completely fine.
I think we should hold off the first of the year until we get the new person to step on board.
But the problem is we only have one clerk at the moment, and that person.
This is how the other part of time was funded there, and two people in there, and four people in that office. And it's only thirty, what, thirty-six days? Today, days, the 24th through, what, six, three, or thirty-seven days? And you can advertise, I mean.
We said advertise, yeah, I mean.
Advertise, but I don't think they interview without a official. If, if you set up the interview, George may have him come in.
I wanna see.
I can have him, he can do the interviews, he can do a pen and a coke, guys, you know? That's why you set us, say.
Well, that's what we're saying, so like, second says, hold off. Hold, so Jim made the motion, I seconded it, if we wanted to proceed, we can, if we don't.
Until the advertise. Only advertise.
Advertising, interview, but don't hire until the next council meeting, if that's the route that is an option. Yeah, so that's it, then, so that's an option. So, to advertise and interview only.
And Andrew has to say.
Correct.
So, is that a motion?
That, the motion, the motion is to advertise, interview with, uh, Andrew's input in the whole process. Jim made the motion, I'll second it.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
Uh, moving on.
Okay, uh, make a motion to add Lisa Herb to the White Committee.
Second.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
Uh, moving on, Councilman Tru.
Yeah, every year we have an agreement, like on the Shiplins School District, where they had purchased a salt office, that's what they use, and then we, we do so. It's a new motion, follow through in the contract.
Second.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Brumball.
Yes.
Keep going, Councilman Tru.
I'm gonna refer this to Steve, he's here.
Yeah, this is.
The LSA grants, he knows more about.
Yeah, these are our two LSA grants, first one being, uh, another one for Memorial Drive. They have not, uh, awarded any LSA's yet this year due to the government shutdown and the budgetary problems with PDA for Pennsylvania. So it has not been awarded, but we have to get this in by the 30th, if that's why we're putting this in. So, talking with the grants, uh, they, they advised us to put another one in for Memorial Drive, but we also wanted to do our sweepers, we're putting in both. So this one here specifically is for, uh, the same exact grant we put in last year for Memorial Drive, we're doing it again, in hopes that we get everything.
We do both, same time, go?
Yeah.
Can we do both?
Make a motion, Lisa, application from the LSA.
Second. Brumball.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Ice Turp.
Yes.
Tru.
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Ice Turp.
Yes, on January the ninth, twenty-sixth, we want to be closing the state-run public gate to have the Stampede Senior Citizen Night, that's a club that they occupy.
Second.
Thank you.
Savage.
Yes.
True.
Yes.
Broomble.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on, Councilman Savage.
So, we received our 2024 audit draft report and. So, Lisa and I had spoken and Drama, he reviewed it as well. So, do you, do you have any recommendations? I mean, I know we talked about some of the things that were kind of left over that needs to be.
I think we just have to, it's time for him to get them done, like now instead of later.
Yeah, so some of these, for the public and for everybody, I like some of them were more accurate POS systems, which we've been talking about, how to get, which systems to use. Also, capitalization policies. And also that, you know, and we talked about that too, like the capital allocations in the budget this year and doing those a little bit differently so that things were more accurate. And also in the fact that when we have grants, that the information needs to be given over so that we can accurately report everything and make sure that everything received and everything expended is truly accounted for first aid companies.
All grants need to be, at least the copy needs to go to the treasurer's office in the month. In all contracts, you can go to the treasurer's office.
I agree with that.
All that information needs to go where money is. Too many things are getting.
You know, we're always making phone calls to find out what was going on where and when.
Paul's going to the treasurer's office, they can answer, then they can revert to somebody else. So, I really think that part of our policies, when we put them together, at least if I put them together, when you guys review, that has to be part of it. Yeah, because here, even as we're talking about Ty Box and things like that, all that feeds into the treasurer's office so that things can pay.
It's important people get paid.
It's important people get paid and get paid early.
That's also important.
We were always using non-funding.
So, any grant that was entered the city, at least the copy of the grant and the approval, whether it needs to be. The key on files, they know. Yeah, one of the findings was about the C N S. The report I sent in, some of the questions probably wasn't fair, which is correct, we're okay. We don't want stuff like that to happen in the future. And what's fun about POS, other than great, I think it should be also included at the treasurer's office. A lot of money comes in there. And if we could use a POS device that allows that to be transferred, or at least the records get transferred over to treasurer's office code.
I mean, especially, I can't speak on behalf of the treasurer's office. I think a lot of us would agree that, I think in today's world, we should go cash, excuse me, should go credit card, check or money, where with cash it's.
A lot of people still do cash.
Yeah, but, you know, it's always an, I won't say an issue, but we're a government entity. A lot of places you can't pay cash, like I can't go pay cash at some places. They say it's credit card, cash or check. I mean, it's twenty, it's going to be 2026 here. We have to start moving into.
I don't think you're saying down about that, but I think, you know, I think we should take away a payer option for.
We do those kinds of things with everything in treasurer's office.
I think they both tell you that people can pay their taxes well.
Yeah, I pay with cash, but I don't have a problem with saying, hey, go get a check either. I mean, but it goes back to, as you said, tracking.
So, we do have to make sure we offer every.
And quite honestly, it's. If we have a set device that does this kind of stuff, we don't make much of a change to them. I think if we don't break that law.
Listen, if we just get away from cash, then we have nothing to worry about. But that's just my opinion. I'm not saying it's right.
You might get away with exactly, you might get away with payments.
Well, they're not making them anymore, so that'd be why. But hey, you know what, if we want to keep with cash, that's up to council, but. So, maybe we should tell all those other people to longer accept cash, they should go back to accepting cash, I guess.
What do you tell you that?
I don't know.
Are they going to match these though?
Well.
Yeah, the fact that my money said legal tender on it, you tell me I have to bill to pay the city, you tell me you don't pay cash. You're going to open the whole camera.
Yeah, but it goes back to tracking and it's more.
Legal, Josh.
Oh, I'm not saying that, but.
We can handle it. Yeah. They can handle it.
We finally got it handled, never mind. Alright, so let's make the motion, we'll move on from it.
I'm sorry, I'll make the motion to approve the city audit draft report.
I'll say.
Along with sending in the management letter.
Oh, yeah, and along with sending in the management letter.
Along with the response for the fines, because you have to attach that to.
So, the audit report, the management letter and the response to the fines.
Savage.
Oh, I'll second, sorry. I'll second his motion. Oh, I'm sorry, got lost there and everything.
Yes.
Savage.
Roche. Yes.
Broomble.
Yes.
True.
Yes.
Ister.
Keep going, Councilman Savage.
I would like to make a motion to approve abstracts and vouchers for the general fund in the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, eighty-six cents. Fueling in the amount of eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents. Private grants in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars, seventy-four cents. And payroll in the amount of sixty-five thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and six cents.
Second.
Broomble.
Yes.
True.
Yes.
Ister.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes. Keep going, Councilman Savage for budget.
And I would also like to make a motion that we approve the first reading of the 2026 budget.
Second.
Broomble.
Yes.
True.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
Roche.
Yes. Moving on to discussion items, the fee schedule, obviously that was settled back when we did the budget. The same thing that's going to be advertised. Obviously, there were some changes made, but now we're good. Any questions for anyone on council for the fee schedule? Alright, moving on to the 2025 ordinances. They just need to be re-advertised. Like I said, there was a mistake there, we corrected it. There were no fines given from the lack of advertising, so I just want to inform council that we were going to advertise them. Any questions from council?
I just want to say, after finding it and working with you and Joel, there was nothing. It wasn't a cost thing for the city at all, it just had to be redone. So, after talking with Joel, he figured it out and saw, and that brings us to here. So, I mean, good job to you guys for fixing it and making it right. Again, not, everything that I found, and I did want to Travis as well, and nobody, there was nothing. Nobody was hurt in those ones. These, different story, but this one, there was nothing, nothing, nobody was hurt. And also thanks to Jody, because I did call Jody for her advice. And she, she knew what she was talking about, so that's a plus. Anyway, again, I just want to say thanks to you guys for being honest with it and talking about it and having your solicitorship in.
We refer to the solicitor.
And slap everybody around a little bit and move on.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, codification, just so everybody know, we did start a process of codification. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns about starting codification and proceeding? Since the last time we did it, which I think was 2021? Does that sound right? Yeah, so 2021. Questions, anyone? Alright, moving on, Sun Tech slot. I know we talked about this earlier, but Jim, I know you're involved with county. Who all has keys to that property? I know we do, I know the county does. Does anyone else have keys to that? I mean, obviously Steve, that's us, but does anyone else have keys to that property? Because like, I got pictures sent to me that there's a truck in there dumping and stuff like that, and fence gates are open, so.
There's a mid-state who is doing Packers Street.
So, they have.
Is using it as a lay-down yard, just as we did with G R Charles.
Alright.
And all they do is they come in, they'll store their stone there, they'll take it down, they'll store their pipe there, they'll take it down, their inlets.
So, just that, no one else does?
It's just, it's just a lay-down yard, just like we use our Raspberry Avenue.
Yeah.
Yard, it's the same exact thing, it's just conducive to use it up there for packing.
Yeah, so it's just.
They have a key to get in for that, yes.
Okay, because like I said, people was like, well, who's up there? Because obviously it's not, they don't recognize any of our trucks, it's like.
That's who it is, yeah.
Alright.
And I know this to Steve.
Yeah.
Because the county really doesn't use it at all.
No, the counties, they were, yeah.
Alright, I guess I just want to ask that question. I don't know, you have to ask Steve or. You have to ask them. Alright, moving on, red light, camera, I mean, cameras on top of red lights. I know we spoke about this probably last year. I mean, obviously, we knew last week or two, like the Santa House got vandalized right there. Third, well, closed the Third Street during the turnaround. I know I got the chief working on getting with, I forget what company we're doing, ones right now, City Hall. Carl, about, you know, just getting a quote on trying to get this for, obviously, our crime purposes, things like this, on getting cameras on top of the red lights in all directions to help with, you know, security, safety, also fighting crime.
Are you looking to tighten my feeds off my cameras?
I don't know what, I don't know what Carl's, his plan is. I'd say we're in the infancy stage of it, so I can't speak on what he wants to do or what he doesn't want to do.
Because the cameras that are on all my lights now control the lights.
Yeah.
There's no more wires in the road.
No, no, no.
Okay, so I want to make sure that we're not.
Yeah, I guess I can't speak how Carl does it, yeah.
Talking about putting up independent cameras from that system.
Yes.
I talked to Carl, he would double this from Packers down to South Front Street.
Yeah.
He's going to review all those, and just get them back, have their individual cameras, not them doing your cameras.
Yeah, well, no, we are tying in Market Street cameras. Front Market, we're tied in right now. Yeah, we do it, but we just don't have a feed because we're shooting off the tower. And the thing fell down in the tower and Camerole never got it backed up and.
We're working on that.
But does anyone have issues with Carl? As you said, you have him on some, but obviously Fourth Street, Market Street, trying to get, no.
We need a camera.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else on that? Alright, anything else for discussions? Alright, moving on to announcements. The city would like to thank the staff and inmates from the SCI whole township for their help with decorating for Christmas this year in Sunbury.
Which Jeff arranged.
Which Jeff arranged.
You know those guys, right?
Not on a personal level. Santa Parade is Friday, November twenty-eighth, starting at six P M. at Raspberry Avenue, going down Tenth, out to Market. It ends at Cameron Park. The tree lighting ceremony will take place at six-thirty in Cameron Park with food and craft vendors. They will be there at five P M. The next council meeting will take place here on December eighth at six fifteen. And remember, this week is Thanksgiving, so City Hall will be closing early on Wednesday, and we close Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving. Is there any other announcements from council or?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll go with you, Spang, I'll go down to the city.
Question.
Yes.
Do we have a date for that? Do we have another meeting in December that we're going to approve that?
We'd have to, like, meeting we have at the end of the year, just to pay bills and.
To adopt.
To adopt budget, that'll be the last meeting.
Do we have a meeting special for that?
Yes.
We, you won't have bills ready till the last week of December.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, the last, the very, like.
We'll not have a meeting on the twenty-second, didn't we?
We will. But I'm saying, we're only at the age, we're only talking about the age right now.
Yeah, we should.
Oh, we have to advertise. If we have to advertise on the date, we should.
So, advertise.
Yeah, we can take on the twenty-second, make a motion to pay the bills on the fiscal thirty-first.
Yeah, we'll have one advertised with twenty-second, yes, we will have one advertised.
Okay, so, here's a suggestion. Make a motion that that be to pay bills at the end of the year and ratify number that first meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah, it's okay.
There you go.
I'm lost, but okay, sounds good to me.
It's easy.
I know, yeah. Any other announcements, Ben?
Unless it be something that got through that, somebody asked a question.
Okay, that works, we can do that. Any other question, any other announcements on that? Well, hey, remember, this is sent out, we're going to review and add things to it.
Past few, three days?
I guess we could have been added when it was sent out last week, but now we get it added and advertised. Steve, you got an announcement?
Yeah, the Noel Park ordinance ends November thirtieth, so for all public to be aware of that. The Brush Recycle Center will be closed this weekend for the holiday. And continuing with our same policy as always, you have leads, call up, we'll come get them. We're out every day getting them, we're getting pretty close to being wrapped up, but just give a call down to shop.
Jim, are you guys doing the scan for years?
Yes, we are.
One to three thirty.
And we need volunteers.
Thank you. You're the volunteer.
Any other announcements? Alright, is there any public comment at this time? Please state your name.
My name is Emma Brown. I'm just kind of piggybacking off of the 351 South Fourth Street. I believe my husband had actually sent a letter over to Jeff earlier today, possibly. I'm not sure who exactly he emailed it to. He did, or he did write a letter, a short letter, if I'm able to read that.
Yeah, you're, yeah.
Okay. So, this is, again, on behalf of my husband, Cole. I'm writing this letter to provide some input. Last year in 2024, we came to the city with an issue. An abandoned property next to our home had a large amount of破损 to that that was encroached into our yard. I found this after I was exposed to it. I went to the mayor's office and filed a complaint. Both told nothing could currently be done due to no available staff to care for the property. This year in 2025, I came to the city again. Jeff tried to help locate the owner. He told me that the property was under the care of the Sunbury Revitalization Authority and that I would have to contact them to have the issue dealt with. After attempting to make contact with Michael Kula and Verona Applebaum Kula, I left messages. Michael Kula got back to me to say he would look into the situation. After some time, I contacted him again for an update. To be told the house was in limbo between the bank and the revitalization authority. He would try to contact the lawyer for the bank to have the issue dealt with. Throughout this time, my wife had spoke to Verona Applebaum Kula about the issues as well and about dates of S R A meetings. She told my wife she would get back to her. At no point did she provide my wife with a concrete date for the meeting, just that the date for November was to be determined. I was able to find the date of the meeting and prepare what I had to present. To my surprise, at the meeting, most of the members of the revitalization authority were unaware of the length of time the issue had been going on for, or how bad the issue actually was. Verona continued to make statements to the other members of the authority about the positive communication she had with my wife. I would like to strongly outline that this was not the case on her part or Michael's part. The communication was poor and the end words were results. I feel the only reason that she even attempted to entertain us during this meeting is due to the right-to-know request I filed in regard to financial records as well as communication between members of the authority. On a very positive note, within thirty minutes of preventing our issue, Joel, as well as Jeff, had a solution to the problem and proceeded to take care of it within forty-eight hours of us telling, I'm sorry, of telling us they would be handling it. Both continue to openly communicate with my wife and I in regard to the property and the work being done there. I cannot commend them enough and the positive experience we've had with them. Both showing true dedication to the city of Sunbury and its residents. Both listened to us and took immediate action, no waiting around for any news to hear back from them. Joel and Jeff have restored our faith in what we assumed was just going to be constant back and forth with no supervision in sight. The interaction continues to show that Mayor Broches, as well as his staff, are actually dedicated to making things better in the city. I would also like to highlight the work ethic of young women and men that showed up to complete the work at the property. Both gave it their all and did a great job and sent a shoulder back up. In closing, I hope this letter helps to outline the fact that there's major work to be done within the Sunbury Revitalization Authority, specifically Veronica Applebaum Kula and Michael Kula. I've never felt more like someone was spinning me and ducking just to hope I gave up the fight. I hope that the city of Sunbury can reassess the staffing within the revitalization authority and hopefully someone who lives in this community, who cares for this community, can come forward and provide positive interactions with people. Uh, looking forward to what we can accomplish as a team, the brothers. Again, like my husband said, um, we have been going back and forth, back and forth for, this was since January of 2024. Um, when we went to the meeting last Monday, Jeff and Joel came up with a solution within 48 hours. Uh, the young couples at our house, um, like someone else had mentioned, they came after school. Uh, they worked quickly, they worked efficiently. Um, some days I didn't even realize that they weren't there because they had just come and went straight to work. Um, until our dogs let us know that they were there. Uh, they were just working their tails off until dark. Um, so I do appreciate them again. And, um, since Thursday, Joel and Jeff and Mayor Brochus just getting it done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
I just want to point clarification. Um, Sunbury's Revitalization Incorporated is the nonprofit that I'm with. It's the Sunbury Redevelopment Authority that you're working with on that. I'm so sorry, and I just don't want people to be confused.
No, you are completely correct.
I apologize for that.
Any other public comment at this time? Please state your name, sir.
Uh, my name is Brad, Eric. Um, I just come here tonight, um, I see things haven't changed, Joel, you're still handsome to me. So I'm, yeah. Now, I, I want to come and, uh, I met with council earlier tonight. Um, 822 days ago, I did something, uh, that I was very ashamed of, very embarrassed about. Um, that, uh, I, I felt pretty hard. And I embarrassed not only my family, not only, uh, some of my closest friends, uh, but I embarrassed the city. And for that, I apologize very deeply to my, uh, I just, I'm, I'm so sorry for what I put the city through. Travis, chief? I never meant to put you through what you had to go through to keep our department afloat. I had to go and do this, and I thought my tears were all shed over the last two years. Um, I really, uh, I just want to apologize. But I also, on the same time, I apologize, I want to thank the citizens of Sunbury. Um, this is a little bit of closure for me. I never had that closure because I was working on some things that I really need to work out. Uh, Joey were a big part of that. And I, I can't thank you enough, uh, for helping me through a lot, uh, during those two years, uh, helping out. Uh, but the citizens, you guys have always had my back. Travis, you and Slack have always had my back. And I, I am 100% Sunbury, always have been. Um, and, uh, I, I continue to watch the department grow. I'm so glad what we, what we did over 22 years of my career, and it was, uh, it was phenomenal. Uh, I think we, you guys are doing a fantastic job. And, uh, I, I support you guys 100%. I still bleed blue for you guys all the time. And, uh, I just want to say, um, everybody up here on that board, uh, everybody out here, we all have differences. We all have problems, we all have issues. But there's one thing we all have in common, that we all love Sunbury and we want to see it thrive. I am still, I am still like that. I still want to see Sunbury thrive. And, uh, I just want to, just again, just apologize at the same time. Want to thank everybody here that's always had my back, and continues to have my back, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, you said you had something?
Yeah, this is just an update from the code enforcement office. These are the, uh, numbers from October 25th to November 24th. Citations, 249. 24 rental revocations, 42. 25 rental lake fees, 202. Auto life, 10. Amusement fee citations, 5. There's been 13 properties taken off of the nuisance list. And there are some that have to be updated and eye works to be put on. So that gives you a little idea of what the code office has done the last month.
And, and going with, uh, the nuisance property, said they have met the criteria to come off. You have to bring them to council for a vote. Take the RERA for a vote to take off, but they're, they have passed, so that's a good thing. Step in the right direction.
And Jim, you forgot the demo you're done on Fifth Street. And also the demo that's coming up after the first year.
Yeah, uh, up one, uh, well, right here. Uh, demolition 141 North Fifth Street. The home was reported collapsed to code enforcement September 9th of this year. No action was taken. Home was re-reported again to code enforcement on 11/9. The home was demolished four days later. And there's another one up, uh, on the rear of, uh, Market Street. Uh, Marlins Up Shop, it's right behind there. That home is willing to be down within the next two weeks.
All right, thank you, Jim, anything else, sir?
No, I think that pretty well covers it.
All right, any other public comment at this time? Please state your name.
Victoria Rosenkrantz. Um, last council meeting, um, I had questioned the audio on the camera system. I would like to remind council that cameras seem to be a, quite a problem in this city. And if we go back to the DOJ, who still hasn't made a final determination on the first set of cameras that we're putting here for $232,000, that we still don't have a resolution on, which I have reached out to them, okay? Last meeting, I asked if these cameras were voted on. And I was told that a council person would work with me and be transparent. So I'm gonna ask again. Cameras don't get voted on when you're paying the bills. Is that how contracts and how things are voted on at council? You vote, so the, the cameras were voted on when you paid the bills? Is that how council runs now?
Victoria, going just back to the audio, I can speak about that. So since last meeting, the audio has been turned off here. We, we brought a separate company in to disconnect the audio from all of the, um, cameras inside City Hall here. And the new company reset all the passwords that the old company cannot get back into it anymore. And only us council people can have access to that camera system here in City Hall. Um, with all your other concerns about the cameras, contracts, whatever, I think it's a best decision that I have the chief look into this, have an investigation on how the audio got in there, on all those types of things. So chief, I don't know if you want to have your input on, you know, investigating that to make sure how it happened, how it all got determined and things like that.
Well, let me, let me stop you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I, I appreciate that. But I'm gonna caution you, I thought of a right to know on where all the cameras were in the Sunbury. And I was not given that information. I was told because of security purposes that I couldn't have that information. You do realize that back on August 13th of 2024, Mr. Tamburelli, right here in this article says where all the cameras are in the city of Sunbury. So I would probably caution you and the folks that are doing your work for you, for them not to give up where the cameras are. At the ice rink, at the skate rink, at Fort Discovery. But is there really one there? Because we had a, a, um, um, damage to there and it was, is there one at Fort Discovery? Cause it says it's there. It says there's 40 cameras and 27 more coming in. 24 cameras in one building, but we don't have any camera park. Where Santa House was just violated. Broken window. I had deer over there. I almost canceled the deal. Cause I'm really worried about it. Saturday, when I'm out here, Christine and I volunteers. A young lady was climbing the light pole and pulling the candy cane off the light pole as we were standing there. But we have 24 cameras or more in one building. So now I'm gonna ask a very point blank question. I want an honest answer, or I will be going to the attorney general's office. And the audio was put in that article as well, from Mr. Tamburelli. Who approved the audio?
There was never a public vote to approve audio.
Never a public vote to approve audio. So this council is okay with violating our civil rights, is what that means.
Everything our solicitor.
Cameras weren't, that's fine, I, I don't need an answer, I'm just giving you the facts. And so unfortunately, I have to be the one seeing here after all this wonderful stuff, and I have wonderful stories too. But unfortunately, transparency, like I said last time, is lacking there. Now, I'm with a question I get asked, if I have a right to know on the last bill from Mr. Tamburelli, I was told it's not available. Do we have the last bill from him? Cause I tried to call him today to find, yes. Is there a last bill for Mr. Tamburelli?
I can answer the question.
Okay, what's that?
I have to answer the question with cryptically because there's possible litigation involved with that document. It is currently being reviewed for legal purposes.
Okay, fair enough.
That's as transparent as I can be.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Because the bills that I have were $58,000 and whatever. So again, no voting, no warranties, no contract, handshakes. I filed for emails and, and cell phone. I got one cell phone picture of the skate park camera. No emails, no contract. So we just handshake and have conversations in restaurants? Is that how it happens? Very, very disheartening. I'm gonna move off the camera, but I certainly hope there is an investigation into it because I feel that the citizens of this city were violated and I'm not happy about it. Next question. Treasurer Martina, I, a couple months ago, I asked you about the forfeiture, a reimbursement for the police department. You said you were looking into it. What happened with that?
I'm, what did you, I don't, again, honestly, for what reimbursement do we?
I was involved with that, Victoria, I'll tell you what happened.
Hey, why do you leave that you said you were looking into?
I don't, but I don't remember that when we were transitioning out, is what I'm asking. How long ago was it to honestly, I knew how it happened.
Would have been back at the beginning of September. So $12,700. So why, why wasn't that put in for the police department?
Victoria, I was on account, I mean, I was a treasurer at the time when they came to me and they had gone and asked me to do that. So when I searched into the thing, I seen that it was Bennet and Miller that was responsible for that. So I notified the chief and I told the chief that I'm a short timer, I'm retiring because you had to go through classes to learn.
20 minutes, please.
How to do this, no, it's only 20 minutes, young man, lady.
I'm, I'm a woman, thank you very much.
I'm a woman, I'm sorry, I apologize.
And I'm very comfortable in my skin as a woman, so let's get that straight too. So that seems to be a problem in this city.
I'm very sorry about that.
What was said, I didn't hear what was said.
It was my $12,000.
No, what was said?
And that's the one Travis, that you went on top of in September.
What was said to you, that you're just correcting him?
The training that I researched for this. Okay, you can talk, no, I'm done, what's very disheartening.
What was said about?
The $12,700.
I'm not even saying about that.
Okay.
What was said by him to you about woman, man?
It's okay. It was, it was a mistake, but you know what, I'm tired of hearing it in the city. I've had enough of it.
But what was said to you though?
He, he made a mistake.
I made a mistake, seriously.
Cause I, I don't want like anybody saying that nothing's being done.
No, 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 I'm not, no, it was a, it was a.
Going back to that Travis, I did talk about that, but we never did. Him and I talked about that and it never got any further, that's why there was no resolution to it. We were looking into what I could do, finishing this year or going forward.
Well, unfortunately for you, Ms. Martina, it wasn't your fault because you would have only had three weeks to do it. And the training for that takes 20 minutes and it has to be done by the treasury department. And is it required training? No, but moving forward for the police department, if they want to apply for other things, it would behoove the treasury department to do it because then they're already certified and it's on five. So these are the things I'm talking about. So our police department has to do it out because someone didn't do their job. That's all I have to say, I don't even want a response to it because it's ridiculous. Not from you, not from me.
Well, what's your response to that?
Oh, young lady.
No, 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 I'm not saying about that.
I said if I met him and Miller was doing it, that's why the neighbors wanted it.
So what ended up coming out of that? It, it just was, you just didn't.
I just, I didn't, I didn't work on it straight. It was, it was detailed, you didn't, what you guys were doing was, you'll see what's more than that.
So it's never been done?
It's never been done, I didn't do it. I told you I wasn't gonna do it because I was leaving.
And you were gonna get me the information so I could.
I have those.
But you got paid $70,000 there, treasurer. I want you to say something.
Chief, chief, can you just talk about, as I said, about the camera stuff and have any look into it? I know you, you want to say something, Victoria, cut. I, I would say like, yes, so definitely, um, what, what do you want? I, I wrote down on just things as. I mean, I think obviously how the audio, contracts, how are locations determined? Like all those types of things to get these answers. Is it legal to say where the cameras are located by the contractor themselves? And obviously, I don't, like, I don't know the legal stuff, so like. If there was a Title 57, which is a wiretap act, if that was violated, are you seeking prosecution? If, if there's any wrongdoings, obviously we have to make sure if any wrongdoings are made correct or anything was violated, you have to make sure that that is not continued, to make sure the, the wrongs are corrected.
Was it an assumption that you put it in without anybody's permission?
No, I didn't say that, that's why we're looking into it. That, I didn't say any of those things. I'm just saying he's gonna look into it to see what the process was, what the processes were being done and then report back to council or the finances. I'm not making any accusations, that's why I'm looking into it. But your question would be, I know what you're saying, that question would be sensitive, voted on anyway. I think I've all my wrongs and this, like, effort at this point, so I'm really, there could be one. And how are you gonna prosecute everybody? Everybody voted on the bill, everybody voted to do it, it's not like it's, it would be one group to say, apparently.
I think like, hell, I gotta answer this, okay? Because, but there is litigation pending, so I gotta be very careful about what I said.
Well, take, take that situation out, and I'm just saying, I mean, how, it would, in general, it would be a whole group. You can't prosecute all of you. One cell.
If that's the case.
Yeah.
It may go.
I, you don't even have to say more, I get what you're saying, I'm just saying, I don't think it's a one individual type of thing. And like, you know, we don't even know if anything's wrong yet. And you don't even know if anything's wrong. Exactly. So it could, but if, but if there is, I mean. That will know. Last week, I know, last week, they, last week, they, you said you had known. So it's like everybody knew, it's not like it was, uh, you know what I mean?
There's already a statement made until last week.
So let's, Mayor, can I just say, let's do this? Because there's some allegations that were also made by text messaging and things like that. Um, I think it's best that if there's, the AGs are working on another case here already. Um, I can have the same investigator basically look into this, do this. Um, and then why don't we just have this signed up to the attorney general's office? I'll talk to the, to the DA to have it basically come up down.
I think that's a very good idea because they're already working on this exact issue. Other facets of this exact issue, so I think that's a very good idea.
That's, that's fine. Thank you, sir. Any other public comment at this time? Any other public comment at this time? I adjourned.